All right, call this meeting back to order. Do I have a motion to come back in from closed section?
I make a motion to return to open session.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, and a second, any discussion? All right, I'll start with you, Bob.
Yes.
Dr. Littler?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
Phillip?
Yes.
I say yes. All right, do I have a motion to certify? Have we only discussed those things that we said we were going to discuss? Personnel and legal. I have a motion to so certify?
I make a motion that we certify.
I have a motion to certify. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. I'll start with you. Phillip?
I certify.
All right, now Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Littler?
I so certify.
And Robbie?
I so certify.
And I so certify myself. All right, Robbie, would you do the pledge and invocation, please?
All rise. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather together today, and just thank you so much for the day that you provided us, for the rain that was much needed. And Lord, just ask that you watch over us, keep us safe in our travels, be with us as we conduct this meeting, watch over each and everyone as they travel back home. Jesus saying we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have to wait a few minutes. We're still having some consultation in the back. And we'll need our attorney here when we do the public hearing on the genealogical club lease. I've been having a hard time saying these big words tonight. This is the third one. I've had trouble speaking. We have several people signed up for the public hearing. Delilah Brady, Stephanie Connor, Dana Perry, William Hurst. Is anyone else wish to speak in that?
Yeah, I had signed up outside, so Maureen Mills. Oh, sorry, never mind.
Do you want, which one you want to speak on?
Uh, in the public citizen's comment.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes?
Kathy Anderson, citizen's comment.
You want on both or just on citizens?
Citizen's comment.
Okay. All right. All right, now I'm gonna open the public hearing at 6:16. All right. Ms. Brady, would you like to come and speak?
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak tonight. How I want to start this is, two years ago, I was in search of a Carroll newspaper article from 1978. And I did what everybody else does. I went online, couldn't find it, went to the public library, and to my horror, they told me that the '70s have never been recorded. They've never been digitized. They've never been microfilmed. So I did all I knew to do, and I went to the Historical Society. And they had a newspaper room. I asked if I could go and search, and they said sure. Two hours later, I found that 1978 newspaper article I was looking for. And in that moment, we created the Carroll County Heritage Digitizing Committee. Stephen Turner and I volunteered all of our equipment and our time to digitize those newspapers to add to the Carroll Library. We finished up with the '70s and then started looking what was online, microfilmed, of all the other years. And what we noticed is, they were microfilmed. So if you've ever looked at microfilm, you can't see the pictures. It's great. They say my name, but I'm a big blob. You can't see me. So we decided, we're going to scan every newspaper we can find, just in a high-definition scan. And that's what we've been doing. And then it didn't take us long to realize, almost none, very little history has ever been recorded in Carroll County. If you look at us statewide, we're at the bottom, as far as counties go. So we made another decision. We're gonna scan everything we can find. People said, well, have you done yearbooks? Have you done family bibles? All kinds of stuff, school records. And we said, no, but we need to start. And so we did. Can I hand you these, gentlemen? So what our heritage digitizing committee did, we formed a plan, and this is a live working document. If you look at the black yellow on the left side on the first page, that starts out with newspapers. And if you notice, there are a lot more newspapers there now, besides the Carroll News. Because prior to 1920, we had several newspapers, okay? A lot. I didn't know about it till we started this. Then we picked up with the schools. Well, if you, this is not a complete list. I couldn't get everything on a list to show you, okay? Because it's large. It's a live, breathing document. But we looked at a lot of schools that have been closed. Rome School, Mount Hebron, Woodlawn, places like that. We just started looking. Well, we started gathering. We started scanning, okay? And then it went on to religion. Folks said, well, have you got some stuff on their religion? So we started scanning information about churches. And people have been bringing stuff, bibles, from the 1800s with the records written in of the birth records. Pretty awesome. Then people started bringing in stuff like the family scrapbooks, veteran scrapbooks, and we've been scanning them, okay? And we decided, we needed to make a searchable digital database for this county. And what I mean by searchable is, you put in the name, anywhere across there that they may be listed, it's gonna pop right up, and you can see the actual document. So if you'll flip over to page two. Starts out with a newspaper collection. Now, I only gave you an example. This is a small example. If you notice, the very first one says, "The Carroll Weekly." That was from 1873. I found that in the New York Historical Society, in their archive room. Don't know what it was doing there, but we got scanned and added it to the collection. Virginia Tech Library had one. They had a People's Advocate. That was 1897. Then cleaning out my dad's barn, found the 1927s. None of these do we have any record for at all, but we do now. And if you notice, this inventory list, there are, well, let me back up. The very first one, the 1873, they wouldn't let me come scan it. They had to scan it for me. Cost me $70 a page. They gave me the educational rate. The going rate's $100 a sheet. I did a backup Saturday night. I have stated in, I'm not just saying, we have scanned 150,000 sheets in two years. That's enormous. So if you look at this list going across, I have the name of the paper, the edition, when it was published, where it is right now, because that's important to keep up where it is. And then, is it digitally scanned? Have we digitally scanned it? Okay, and that's the next column. Who was the editor, the publisher? Notes that I may have found along the way. For example, the People's Advocate, 1899. Sidney Allen was the editor of that paper. It's pretty cool, okay? On down to the bottom, the El Paso Morning Times from 1912. If you notice, March 15th, they mention Carroll County. If you flip over to the next page. Once we have scanned it, probed it, edited it, then we run it through a program to make it searchable. And that's what the far right column is. If it's now searchable, and you can put in a name, you can find it, okay? She'll go to the next page. It says yearbooks. We've only been scanning yearbooks in a month. This is our two pages so far of yearbooks. If you notice, Carroll County, remember, it didn't start from 1970, the high school, but look down at Hillsboro High School, 1938. Pretty cool. We have, we have pictures, we have the names. The next page, ever, Woodlawn High School. Same thing, 1938. We're still looking. This is work in progress. We are begging people, anything you got, okay? And we give credit to whoever it is. And before we go to that last page, what I'd like to say is, I don't know any county in Virginia or in the United States for that matter, that has a database like we're trying to create. It's extensive. Will we get it finished in our lifetime? I don't know. We're gonna keep scanning. Since day one, our intentions have been to make this a shareable database with everybody in our county, and that's just the way it's been. We've had such a tough time, we want everybody to be able to look at it. And our goal is, at the moment, to put kiosk, searchable kiosks up throughout the county, so people can go and look, okay? One day, we hope to have the internet option, but you're talking cha-ching, you're talking grants, and we're not there, okay? We're just not there yet. Also, since day one, our biggest headache has been finding a place to put our equipment down. When we started this two years ago, we did it in Delala Library in the historical courthouse. And that was fine. But the stipulations were, if anybody needed that room, we had to pack up and get out, okay? So a year ago, I was told that the old board of supervisors room on the upstairs floor had been empty for several years. So I tracked all that down, got permission, got a key, and we went, okay? We moved. But if you'll look at the last page, oh, I almost forgot that. This is the equipment that we use. What you're looking at here is about $10,000 worth of equipment. It's big stuff. It's not a flatbed scanner, okay? It's not a television. It's some high, high stuff, okay? We have the equipment to transfer VHS to digital. We have the equipment, there are tons of John Perry Ottoman consents that we can convert to audio. So when you search John Perry Ottoman, you'll get his stuff, too. It's pretty neat stuff. So like I said, we tracked down, we got permission, we got a key, and we went to the old boardroom. And the day I opened that door, about that, about that, walked in, the stench was horrendous. It had been empty for years, okay? There was black mold on everything, on the tables, on the walls. We cleaned it up. We made it a place that we could bring our equipment into and historical documents. And since then, we've been using that. So almost a year, right out of here. And our next big part in this is have community scan days. And what we're gonna do is ask the community, please bring anything, you know? Let us scan it, let us add it to it. We have sheets for them to sign to say it's okay. And what we've been doing so far, when people bring stuff, if they're able, they come upstairs, and we scan. If they're not, we go downstairs, or we meet them at the library. I've even gone to people's houses, okay? It's that important that we do this. And basically, we need a room to scan in. We need a room. And so I'm here tonight, gentlemen, asking you for your continued permission and blessings to allow us to use that old supervisor boardroom. The other thing I'm asking you is, we all know the fiasco this weekend. I'm asking, if you ever get access to that boardroom again, would you please take my pictures, okay? There's pictures on the wall that are Carroll County history, and they mean a lot. Would you happen to have any questions I make an answer?
As far as you knew, there was no, no one stopped your permission from operating over there, correct? I mean, no one notified you that you couldn't be there or anything?
Nobody said, nobody said anything. The last, when they, I was given the key to go in, that was the last I heard from anybody, because I was told, the room had, the lease had expired in April of 2018, and I did not ask until December of 2018. So really, it was not leased to anybody, and it was, it was an empty room. There were, I can't remember if it's two or three boxes that had an old manuscript in it from like 1998, Book something. And that room flooded over the summer, and I actually picked those boxes up and took it to the next room to protect them. But there weren't mine. And everything else was just trash. It was, I mean, I have pictures of it. It was just trash. It was boxes, like liquor boxes that had been flattened out for trash, toilet paper boxes that had been flattened out, trash in the trash can. That was it. There was nothing in the room.
See, I've always thought that when somebody takes your time, they take the most precious thing you've got. Now, if you're a young whippersnapper, that don't mean anything. But when you get to be an old codger, it means tremendous amount. But I just wanted to thank you, and Steve Turner and others, for doing this. I spent four hours over at the Carroll News on Monday, looking through, I needed to verify a date. And I thought it was either '72, '73, '70. And so I started out, and it just takes hours to go through, and, and that's when Allen and Dave said, well, thank goodness, this is being digitalized now, and in the future, it will be very great.
It's gonna be nice.
And I already keep my mouth shut. As, as a person who loves Carroll County history, the good and the bad, the, it, you cannot put a price on what you're doing. I mean, I've seen things that, that somebody has something on Facebook, and it leads to a picture of great, great, great so-and-so that somebody in Georgia had and so forth.
And there's been people...
This should have been done years and years and years ago, and I'm sorry that we have...
I don't know if we had, at that time, the perfect equipment for it. Like, all you had back then was like microfilm and microfiche and those types of digital images. And that's, that's good. If that's all you've got, that's good. But now, it's better. It's better. And I'm very thankful to the Carroll News. In their bound editions, they only have 1965 through '79?
2003.
2003 bound. So any we can't find, flat. See, it really needs to be flat, not bound, because when you're trying to scan a book, some of you with scanners, you think about laying a book on a flatbed scanner. That's not what we do, okay? It's an arm scanner. It looks like the microphone. You lay the image, you lay it down, you click a button, it scans within a half a second.
I hate to think how many hours y'all have doing this. I mean, I've done a little bit of stuff, but it's nothing, y'all...
And it really bothered us Saturday night.
Five hundred hours to even begin to, to cover everything. I doubt that.
Having all of our stuff pitched out of that room, and the door locked, and all the equipment, the historical documents. I went back yesterday to clean up and try to make some kind of, something out of it to do a type of inventory. And I, it's, it's disheartening. It's very disheartening. We've put a lot of time into this. And I have the actual inventory back there. It's that thick, just like the two sheets I gave you. And it's...
Well, I just want to thank you.
Anything else, gentlemen?
It's like Bob said, it's an invaluable service that you're providing.
And Gerald at the clerk's office has already asked us to scan, he calls them the board of supervisors books, but they're actually the justices' books. And so we're getting ready to pull that in. So it's just, it's amazing, when they were forming Carroll County, the laws that were pushed down. It's just gonna be fascinating. So it's kind of a real...
And I can tell you from experience, you can go to, you can pull up Abington, maybe Abington, Bristol, Washington County, and it's just amazing. I mean, you can spend hours going through and never leave your house.
Right now, we don't have...
And that's what Carroll County needs.
We're writing the grants. We haven't got feedback from them yet, to make it larger and to incorporate. Our goal was really to, and it still is, to incorporate all the different history here in our county, whether it be Historical Society, or Genealogy, or Clerk of Court. We want to be that center of the hub to bring it all together. And all we can do is try. But thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for your time this evening. I'll be real quick. I'm here to speak in support of the efforts of Delilah Brady and her team in the digital preservation of our history. And as you've just heard her say, she's talked about some of the artifacts and papers and things that they have scanned over time to make this, this searchable database. She's been scanning these papers for some time, and she and Stephen and anyone else on her team have volunteered their time to do this. And I've been fortunate enough to be able to come on a few Saturdays to help. And it was fascinating. I have lived in Carroll County my entire life, and there were things that happened in this county that I had no idea until I started scanning papers, back from the '50s, '60s, '70s. And I just was enthused with everything, because I love history. And I wanted to learn more about my county history. I've been here 40 years, I want to know a little bit more. So I asked Delilah if I could help, and she said, of course, we'll be glad to help, we'll be glad to take anybody. And she explained a little bit about how you get those papers done, but it's, it's a little bit more involved. The papers have to be flattened out, so that there is not a crease, so that the scan can actually get all of the words, get all of the pictures, so you don't have creases or tears. And that takes a person. And then you also have to keep those papers in line, because you're trying to scan them in chronological order, or scan them, you know, to at least you don't have a 50 here and a 70 here. You're trying to keep everything in line. And then you have to iron, so you get that flat out. That takes another person. And then it takes someone to actually work the scanner, and someone to put the paper on the scanner. So it takes at least four people, a minimum, to get that done. And it also takes room to spread out, to have room to work all of that. As you can imagine, these, it, and as Delilah has said, takes a lot of time. People have come to bring documents, pictures, books, and what better way for, to preserve that people's personal property than to have somewhere central that they can bring those documents? Also, the documents that she has already. You know, you need somewhere central to, or somewhere on county property to store those, since it is our history. It also protects Delilah and her team as they're scanning. You know, there's somewhere where they can be safe to protect, to us, to scan. This is not just for the county, but it's for all of the citizens. It's for everybody. It's for my kids. It's for my grandkids. It's for anybody who moves to Carroll County. I mean, we want our county to grow, we want to flourish, so we want new people to come in. So if they come in and they want to know about our history, this is the perfect way for them to find out. So I'm here to speak to her, on her behalf, and to ask for permission for her to please be allowed to continue this invaluable service, to assist everybody, the county, the Historical Society, Genealogy, everybody that works together. It's all history. And so I just would like to ask for the support to, for her to continue that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, I'm Donna Perry, and Delilah just happens to be my sister. If you all don't know my sister, it doesn't matter. If you say she can't do it there, it will get done. It doesn't matter. She'll get it done.
You're the younger sister, aren't you?
I am. But I just, I'm not sure, but I think if I understand correctly, that the other organization who had the facility leased has requested some additional facility, and I don't think we're just talking about kicking out the genealogy people. There, I think there's six rooms in question. So it sounds like that there's plenty of room for people to share. A year ago, we didn't know that Delilah and Mr. Turner and Ms. Onscore and several other people who have been involved, we didn't know they needed it. A year from now, maybe they won't need it, but maybe somebody else will. And I don't think that we need to be tying up what resources we have for 10 years to one organization, because we don't know who might need those public spaces, and they're public spaces. There could be any number of organizations who need a room. And if the Genealogy Society's open one day a week, I'm not sure what kind of records and, you know, what their space requirements are, but I think it should be limited to what their needs are, not what their wants are. And I hope y'all can find her a little place, because I think that it's kind of, I think it's gonna be really interesting once it's all pulled together. Yeah, you know, some other things that she scanned that I found just completely fascinating when I went through it. My mother was not a hoarder, she was a pack rat. And I found these plastic boxes of the funeral cards from people. And it was just amazing to go through, and you'd see it, and you'd say, well, gosh, I didn't know that person was kin to this person, you know? Because they were old, you know, and they were, it was just something different. But it's, it's not just, it's, it's not just newspapers and school yearbooks. It's, you know, it's, it can be any number of things. So I hope you can cut her out a little spot up there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And my mother had 1,500 memorial cards in that little box. They're all been taken.
Members of the Board of Supervisors, members of the county administration, my name is William Hurst and Vice President of the Carroll County Genealogy Club. I'm here tonight to speak for the extension of two leases. One, the General District Court location downstairs, and the second, the tourist office and the board meeting room upstairs in the courthouse. Carroll County Genealogy Club is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization organized by the State of Virginia. We have 54 registered paying, dues-paying members representing 11 states in the Union. When our out-of-state people come by to visit, they purchase food, shelter, and fuel within our community, so we do contribute some economic advantage. We receive no funds from the county for our work. When we moved into the old General District Court area downstairs from the upstairs locations, we hauled all the paper trash to the dump, which involved a 12-foot utility trailer heaped up. We painted the walls, we carpeted the floor, we lined the walls of the front room with bookcases that now have our hard copy documents on it for research, and we installed an air conditioner in the front room. The two upstairs rooms then became bulk storage rooms for us, chairs, tables, and books. We appreciate the use of your building. Per the previous lease, we carry insurance on the contents and liability coverage to this day, well beyond the expiration of the previous lease. Our downstairs location is far better for us now, because seniors and handicapped people have better access to that building. We asked the Board of Supervisors to renew both of our leases. Paragraph one of the lease says, "At the end of the initial term, the parties may, by mutual written agreement, extend this lease for an additional term of 10 years." Surprisingly to me, there is no time limit on when the parties can work out this mutual written agreement. I don't know if that was an oversight or what. You know, 30 days... You know, 30 days, 60 days, here we are, a year, a year and a half, and we're trying to work out a mutual agreement. Likewise, in the same paragraph, neither party may terminate this lease except by material breach of the lease. We feel that we have met the spirit of the lease by maintaining an orderly work area, maintaining an insurance policy on all the rooms that we have leases on. We posted our office hours on the front door, front and rear door, and we've posted our office hours in the local newspaper. Paragraph 13 of the lease says, "The lease, 'E,' shall not assign, sublease, or allow others to use the leased premises or leased areas without the approval of the leasor." We had a situation here, and I'll even with it, I'm not here all the time, but our people who are here all the time said that they were notified that during the drama, courthouse drama, that the scanning organization needed to be shifted out of the law library and over into the old board meeting room for a temporary time. We couldn't object to that, and we didn't object to that. Unfortunately, the third party stayed well beyond the reasonable time. They liked the location. Well, I don't blame them. It was a secure room, they were working on other people's furniture, and other people were paying the insurance premiums. Our concern is, what happens? Does our insurance company have to pay if there's damage to that room caused by these uninvited people camping in our room? Now, you say, "Well, what could happen?" The electronic devices, they could fail anytime, start a fire, et cetera. So we still don't know who would pay in case there was damage by someone that we had not invited into the area. We appreciate what the Board of Supervisors has done for us over the years. In the past, Bobby Patterson handled all of our leases. Unfortunately, we lost Bobby. And when we did, we lost our business guru. And that's how things fell into the crack, so now we're here a year and a half later trying to get the mutual agreement cleared up. If the Board finds a higher-value organization that adds to the economy of the area, that can afford to furnish the room that they would be leasing, and can afford the property and liability insurance for that room, then we understand that the Board has to be a good steward of your county's resources. If the Board cannot extend the lease on the old board meeting room to the Carroll County Genealogy Club, please extend the lease to us for the old tourist office. That would permit us to consolidate our bulk storage into the front room. Now, that would be a painful experience for us because there's some very heavy furniture that had to be moved out of the boardroom. Anyways, that would leave the old boardroom essentially stripped to the walls and to the carpeted floors with only one desk remaining in there. And I don't know whoever picks the room up after that, if you choose to give it to someone else, would have to furnish it to their satisfaction. Thank you for your time and attention on this subject. Any questions?
Any other discussions? Mr. Derb, is it critical that it has to be a written lease? Can it be a, a, kind of like a permission-type thing? Would you address that for us, please?
There's no legal requirement for the Board of Supervisors to have a lease in place. You could do any number of things. You could do a license agreement, you could do just written permission, a right of use for a defined term, and you could incorporate into that agreement some of the things that we've already got in the lease, such as a hold harmless and an insurance requirement. But it could be a revocable license or a simple permission and right to use. So you wouldn't have to have a formal written lease on any of the courthouse that's public property and you can allow the use without disposing of it by lease or sale.
Thank you. At one time, there was a preservation committee that was in charge of the old courthouse. And that's probably something we should look at down the road to help us make a determination on what we should do there. But I'm just throwing that out. Does any other board member have anything to say about it?
This thing needs to be settled as quickly as possible, and I personally would like it settled tonight. It seems, I remember, in my olden age, I don't remember as much as we all used to, but it seems at one time that we did, looked into taking bids, scanning so much stuff, and I don't mean to be too high or low, I'm just not sure, but it was in the many thousands of dollars to get this done. And I just, I just think it's important that we get on with life tonight and get this thing settled.
Mr. Hurst, what, do you recall what the rate is for the insurance? What, how much y'all had to pay for the insurance?
I don't know, one second.
Almost $500.
Almost $500.
Annual.
Is that for the whole, how many rooms?
All of them.
That's for the whole?
And that's for the whole tents?
And liability.
And liability.
That's for the whole courthouse building?
No, just for the rest. What we have leased in our name.
Well, I do know that the county administrator gave permission for those folks to use that upstairs last year. We were made aware of that. And we have any suggestions or a motion, how we should proceed?
The Historical Society's downstairs.
They're on the right-hand side. The Historical Society is, is on the right-hand side. Genealogy is on the left-hand side. It's where this is. Looking from the front of the building, if you're standing looking at the front of the building. The Historical Society's on the right-hand side. And Genealogy's on the left-hand side.
And the room that y'all used, Delilah, is upstairs, correct?
Upstairs, through the top door on the left, like you were going into the courthouse, or into the courtroom, but going to the...
Upstairs on the left. Used to, that was a place I liked to avoid when I was growing up. Judges, you had a speeding ticket, you was losing your license. You didn't want to go in that place. I think we should be able to work this out in some fashion. You know, we, all these, all these groups are needed in the building. It helps retain the integrity of the building, helps us notify, notify us when things are not working there that we can do. But we have to have access. The key, I mean, it was changed, the lock was changed without checking with the county. That's just not right. We have to have access to that building to check on the heater. We just can't up and move people's stuff out when they have permission to be there. You know, that's just, that's just not right.
Ms. Dalton, I thought you were downstairs with the entrance for the left.
When you go come up to front of the courthouse, we're on the right-hand side. And the historic society's on the right, when you come up.
No, no, in my...
I'm ready to make a motion if I figure out my left and right there.
I'm on the side door. And you go out the front, you're on the left.
You're on this side, going up the steps.
Okay, Katie, you're on the bottom left.
Right. Correct.
I had a friend that was in the artillery, and he never, he never said, "Repeat." He would say, "Right or left," and I think I've been hit by artillery. All right, so Katie, your group needs, needs a lease or agreement to stay on the bottom left, is that right? Is that correct? I mean, not...
That's correct.
All right, okay. All right, and then, Delilah, your group is currently upstairs, above Katie, on the left.
Correct.
Correct, okay, all right. Now I can talk. All right, the, we haven't, we, in the past, we haven't charged for, like, rented the space or anything like that, correct?
That's, that's correct, Bob. No charging for electrical, no charging for heat. Is that correct?
Do you charge or don't charge?
Don't.
Don't.
Counselor, are we any better off doing a, like, a formal lease or doing a verbal motion? I mean, what would you recommend?
I mean, it really depends on what you're, what you're looking to do. It's, it's the Board's discretion. If you want to do a lease, you certainly can. You can do it for one year, two years, or more. If you're inclined to not do a lease agreement, you could do a revocable license agreement on a one-year term, with no rental payment, contingent on having insurance, right of access to the county, indemnity, some sort of indemnity to save harmless the county is what I would recommend. But you could, you could certainly approve a license as well as a lease, or simply approve the, the party's, the right to use those portions that you might designate, along with a right to use the parking, on a annual basis or something of that nature, if that's what you're inclined to do as well. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to.
Would it be preferable, perhaps, to allow the Genealogy Club to continue to use the lower floor and give Delilah permission to use the upper room, the old boardroom, tonight, and have you come back with something written so that we can actually see it?
I think that's entirely appropriate if you want to approve that this evening and...
To keep both, both parties working to the county's advantage and that we can do something in a timely manner once we see something in writing.
You're not suspending anyone's operations that way, but you're...
But we are confirming that Delilah can use the old boardroom.
You could certainly do that, absolutely.
I do not like the idea of a one-year agreement. I'd like a little...
Well, he can bring back the...
I can prepare a draft with those terms sort of unspecified and let the, the Board choose that length of term and any other conditions that you'd like.
Sir, you had a question?
Yes, does that, would that permit us, then, to recover our personal property out of the, the old boardroom and move it forward to the old tourist office?
In, in my opinion, yes.
Does that work?
I mean, if, if it belongs to you, you certainly have the right to get it out.
So put that in your motion, make it even more clear.
Let's make sure we're not stepping on everybody's toes here. We're trying to get this figured out, man. So you just have to move stuff from upstairs, or what?
From the one room.
From the one room, correct?
Yes.
Ms. Brady?
Is there not enough room now? It's, it's just a big table, and there's the one desk in the room where we've been. And in that other room, there's a desk and an old filing cabinet. I've got pictures of it, I can show you. Why can't it be moved down into their space? And that leaves one more room in case there's another group. And then it won't be getting reeking in the drag stuff all the time.
Is that something we can work out down the road, or...
Well, I don't see that happening because we have folding eight-foot tables upstairs, file cabinets, I do believe, chairs and stuff, as well as some books. So that is our bulk storage location.
All right, so would Delilah go to the law?
No, I just, I think, I think we need to sit down and have a meeting with these folks, and make, look at these things, do a walkthrough, and so we can get this all straightened out because, you know, the other thing, lock's going to have to be changed back. You know, we don't have, county has to have access to that as well. So we need to make sure they can get their stuff back in there where it's supposed to go, and let's meet. But in the meantime, we can go ahead and, you know, do this, but we need to meet and see, at least do a walkthrough with these folks to make sure we're doing the right thing, making the right decision and...
I didn't want to do anything quickly tonight.
Yeah.
Equipment's there.
Yeah. Does that, does that work for everybody? Love?
It's down with me. Everybody is okay that all of our junk that was just filled up, go along?
I'll volunteer to come in and meet with y'all, whatever you want to do, and any other board member that wants to. And we'll walk through and look at it, and then come back with a recommendation to the Board to make that decision next, next month. Does that work? Is that...
I mean, do we need to go in, do we need to make a motion, let her restore, continue using it?
I, I think that would be appropriate, yeah.
Well, I like Blake Tom had his motion kind of set up if you want to make that about her using it.
I'll make a motion between now and the next meeting in January, the regular meeting, that we allow the Genealogy Club to use the lower floor, and Delilah can use the old boardroom, and the Genealogy has permission, Club has permission to use, to move the furniture from the boardroom into the other room for the time being.
All right, have a motion.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I may. So you're talking genealogy, left's bottom left, historical, bottom right. Decisive, top left.
And what I said, for the moment, the Genealogy could move their furniture from the old boardroom into that other upper room that they already have, until we get it all worked out.
There are two rooms up there, one with an entrance inside the building, one with an entrance outside of the building. And we would move into the entrance outside the building.
But the one you already have stuff in, right?
Yes.
All right, so this, all right, have a motion and a second. I'll start with you, Philip.
Yes.
Bob?
Yes, my feeling is the Board wants to accommodate you folks with the least amount of problems, okay? So we, so I vote yes, and we'll keep working on this.
All right, Dr. Letcher?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
I say yes. Close this public hearing at 7:01. Do y'all, do y'all have my email? Y'all email me, or when, you tell me a date, and I will, I will get together, or you can, if you'll call Crystal, give her a date, and I can meet, yes.
We're open every Wednesday.
Every Wednesday.
From 10 until 3 o'clock.
Wednesday at 10, does that work for you, Delilah?
No, because I teach during the day, so it would have to be...
Duh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. It would have to be about 4:30 or 5:00, and I'd be glad to any afternoon. 4:30 or 5:00 is perfect. Just somebody pick a date and tell me.
All right.
What's the date? You want to do it on a Wednesday, when we're open?
Wednesday at 4:30.
What's the date, Monday? So you're saying Wednesday, the 11th? If it snows, no.
If, if the schools are closed, we will be closed.
Let's put it the next week, okay? So it'll be the next week on Wednesday at 4:30. I mean, if it snows. If it's, if a school closes, we'll move it back a week, same time, just a different date.
December 18th, 4:30.
December 11th, which is, it'll be Wednesday, 4:30. If it snows, we'll go to the next week.
11th with no snow.
Yeah. All right, let's move on to citizens' time. Doug, you're on deck.
All right, thank you, sir. Good to see you all again. I had to go visit a grandson last night, meetings you all had, so, I was out of town. I have a few things to bring up with you all, just quickly here, and there's expenses, I'm aware of the cost thing, and so you may be aware of this and dealing with it, so I want to throw out a few items. Number one is, as you're well aware, that Microsoft will no longer be providing security patches to Windows 7, and there are machines at your library and possibly in your offices here and everything that are not on 10, they do have some on 10, they're going to continue to patch that. That's going to be a huge expense, and I hope you all are going to be covering that, because there have been places held for ransomware. Does anybody who's into PCs and stuff today know, there's been cities and counties and such held for ransomware where they can't even get to their tax files or anything? You get wiped. So I hope you all are considering that, I know the budget's tight, but that's something's got to be considered, and I know Salil probably have to be addressing that, too. In fact, I bought a whole new laptop, because I have a computer that won't change to 10, regardless of what me and Rick Jones try to do to it, so I'm going to have to just get rid of that computer. The second thing I wanted to bring up is, we've had, to be in the situation we're in, have to talk about everybody suffers and all, but, you know, I've been here a long time, since I was, came here in Carroll County High, and there've been a lot of bad purchases of land, deals with companies and such like that, and I'm just a little concerned, we have all that land sitting out here. I brought it up before, we need to get some restaurants or gas stations, sheets would have been nice out there, up the next exit, not the Cochran's exit and everything, because they bought up all the land and apparently have a lot of pool there. And so, again, I bring up the fact that liquor by the drink is necessary to get jobs, to get people to stop. You're not going to get any more drunk there and go in the ABC store. People have this all over everywhere else. I'd like to see the county re-approach that, I know it, you know, comes out of the woodwork, everybody goes crazy. But, you know, I think you need that to get your Chili's or to get some other Panera Bread, I don't know, we could get stuff up there. They took a Cracker Barrel and put it in Mount Airy in a terrible spot, really, in terms of the roads that passed by Mount Airy. So I would have liked to have had that here, and that doesn't have anything to do with liquor by the drink. So I'm not sure what's blocking getting things like motels, hotels, sheets, sort of gas stations, truck stops. I, I am concerned that perhaps Cochran's has a big influence somehow on the money, because when interstate backs up, everybody pulls off at McDonald's and Shoney's has a big influence there. And so, you know, well, since we're hearing conspiracy theories a lot anymore these days, it does strike me as a little odd that we cannot get someone to come in there and put something at our location up there, a truck stop, anything. That's going to be jobs, people stopping, you know, the other day, it was backed up like crazy on 77. So anyway, let me get to the last thing. Everybody keeps messing with the rec department, it's one of my favorites, we need a ramp, because people cannot use the back room, I hope you all are aware of that. They don't have a ramp up to the old exercise equipment back there. So that's something to look about. I understand you're consolidating it down to Woodlawn, so I'd like to, you know, you ought to keep addressing the needs there. My wife and I use it, and a lot of people use it. I wish they were all here to, to talk to you all about that, because I know some people are being left out because of the, they can't go back there and exercise, because somebody could sue us, because we don't have ramp access to that workout room. At least, that's my understanding, that it could be a lawsuit if a disabled person couldn't get back there. So thank you very much.
My grandson's playing over tonight, so we.
Good court. Court's ready.
You mean Woodlawn? What are you talking about?
Woodlawn, Woodlawn School, Bayou. I've been here about that long.
Sorry.
Well, it's, it's a main center for modern recreation in Carroll.
The change in the law about liquor by the drink.
Yeah, that, I was, I had it marked down here, liquor by the drink is coming here where we want it to, not general, somebody saw fit to pass that.
Ah, thank you.
And it goes into effect when, July 1, is that, and it has been at each, each one of our exits. Didn't Shoney's?
Once you have that exit up there?
19, it was, it was covered as well, so these things, these things are already in place.
Okay, okay. I'm just concerned.
And this one, liquor by the drink, is going to be statewide, correct? From July 1, without our vote.
Okay, well, I'd like to see, I'd like to see something to get stuff at that exit.
We, we have no, that was something the state determined.
Right, okay.
All right, Katie Horton.
Hello.
Hi.
Back from last meeting, same rant about the EMS. Thank you for answering me on Facebook. I'm still waiting for you to return my message that I sent you on December 4th, so I'll hold my breath. My problem is that the day after you guys made the motion saying you would advertise that it was important to hire, somebody went to EMS and said that it was only a motion, that you weren't going to be putting people in place at this time, and told them they were not allowed to talk on social media or to people outside of EMS if they want to keep their jobs. That, to me, doesn't seem right, and I have multiple messages from multiple people that are volunteers. Right now, we're already running with only two ambulances on a shift if anyone calls in sick or takes the day off. Two ambulances to cover from Laurel Fork all the way over to Woodlawn, two ambulances to help anyone that calls. You're saying that it's important to protect the people of Carroll County, but yet you don't want to put ambulances on the road, you don't want to hire people that are qualified, that have been volunteering and working for the county in EMS positions. You know that they're there, and yet you're refusing to put them in paid, full-time positions when there's four open, full-time positions. That doesn't seem right, that you're risking my family's life and other people in this room's families, because you want to save money and say that it was just a motion to advertise, and that you're willing to not put a date for closing for hiring these people. It's not right at all. And I don't think it's fair that you're willing to risk our lives. We're due for snow this week, so it's going to take even longer for an ambulance to get someplace, and you don't want to put more on the road. So we're waiting 45 minutes as it is to get ambulances from Galax to here. Laurel Fork is waiting 45 minutes for calls to 911. From your report, from January to March, 59% of volunteers called to answer, did not answer the calls out to people sitting out. You have that on your agenda from back in April. It's not right, it's not right that with this weather coming up, you're willing to risk our family's lives to save money, and that's all I have to say on that.
Just, just for you to know, the reason there's no date of closing, because it's continuously accepting of applications.
So you still need to fill the positions?
That, that will be worked on.
Mm-hmm.
But I'm just saying, we continue to take applications.
You can hire one, two people, there's four spots open full-time.
I'm speaking. All right, let's move forward to the next person. Ms. Mills?
I've seen how much they care, especially since they hired Dr. EMS, too. Good job. Thank you. Thank you for backing, caring about the people in Carroll.
Thank you for listening. My name's Maureen Mills, and I live on the borders of Laurel Fork and Doug'sburg districts. Supervisor Joe Webb, who unfortunately is not here tonight, and I'm very sorry about that. He has been really generous with his time and very thoughtful about listening to my concerns, because I'm here also to talk about EMS and the lack of medical care. Neither Laurel Fork nor Doug'sburg has local emergency medical response. Supervisor Webb, we've been talking for several hours about this, and he suggested that I come forward and make my concerns known to the board, so I'm sorry he's not here tonight, but I'll get him a copy of this. So he suggested I bring these concerns to you, and I appreciate the opportunity to discuss the critical act of emergency medical services and to propose a cost-effective solution at a time of budgetary upheaval. I'm the secretary treasurer of Laurel Fork Volunteer Fire, though I am here today, as I said, because I live in and care deeply about Laurel Fork and Doug'sburg districts. People in our districts pay the same taxes as other county residents, but we do not receive the same equal emergency medical services. This is a matter of life and death, or a successful recovery from a medical emergency. So as I said, neither Laurel Fork nor Doug'sburg has a rescue squad. When Cana District could not sustain EMS, the county stepped in to fill the safety gap, employing two-person teams for 24-hour coverage. This is what Cana residents deserve. Cana and Laurel Fork have about the same population, and Doug'sburg residents double the need in our part of the county, we're almost out into Patrick. Officers of our Laurel Fork Fire Department have raised concerns about lack of medical coverage for several years. Seeking a Cana-like solution, officers told the county that Laurel Fork Fire will add beds to our Station 1, and that we would otherwise be ready to go and equipped to run emergency medical calls when the county decides to support a two-person team with 24-hour coverage. However, Carroll County has suggested instead, many times, that Laurel Fork Volunteer Firefighters, who are also certified EMTs, can respond to medical calls. This will not work. Our firefighters work full-time jobs, some with various aid agencies. The county cannot expect our volunteer firefighters to become a rescue squad. If that were to happen, the unrealistic expectations and enormous stress will ripple, will ripple across our fire department, and Laurel Fork Fire will be in real trouble. Recruitment and retention for fire is tough enough without the added pressure and liability of forcing rescue squad response. The efforts of Laurel Fork, may I continue? Thank you. The efforts of Laurel Fork Fire Officers to ensure local emergency medical coverage have not been successful. But recent events, and this is why I'm here this evening, recent events make this financially doable. Laurel Fork Rescue has notified Carroll County that it has one volunteer left, and he will run only first responder calls, so we will have no ambulance services, we do not have ambulance services, and we do not have lifesaving services anymore out from Laurel Fork Rescue. And if you look back, from January through October, Laurel Fork Rescue was only able to run 3% of their calls. So I've heard the estimate, and I've been trying to track this down, but perhaps you can do better than I can at this, I've heard the estimate that Laurel Fork Rescue, which is no longer operating, has about $240,000 and other assets at the station. So money and assets accumulated by Laurel Fork Rescue come from county funds, donations from neighbors, bunch of neighbors here, and also from billing for services. Money and assets have come from the Laurel Fork District, and they really need to stay in the Laurel Fork District. So there is a win-win solution to this, if, as it appears, the no-longer-operational Laurel Fork Rescue has approximately $240,000 that should stay in our community. This money can initially fund a two-person 24-hour coverage for a period of time, that then could be evaluated to see how it's working, what's working, if it's not working, but at least we'd know and we'd have some coverage out by us. People in our districts will then have emergency medical services the same as other Carroll County residents. We understand that supervisors are struggling with enormous fiscal troubles, but there is money that should stay in our community to provide equal access to emergency medical services. Laurel Fork and Doug'sburg residents are very grateful, as I know everybody here is, to the volunteers who have for decades come to Doug'sburg Fire and Rescue and Laurel Fork Rescue. The best way to honor their service is to carry on their mission and serve our districts. So I thank you again. I wish Supervisor Webb was here to chime in, we've had a number of conversations about this, but he suggested I bring this critical matter and a possible resolution to the board, and I appreciate your time and consideration. Can I give you a couple copies, and perhaps one to give to Supervisor Webb? Are there any questions or ideas?
I do know that our EMS director is looking at these things as we speak, and has been looking at this.
I do, sir, and, and one of the reasons why I am here is because, as I say, in, in my testimony here, Laurel Fork officers have tried to be heard about this solution, to get coverage out to our part of the county that is truly forsaken right now. It, it takes a very long time, and, and it's, it's an equity issue, it's a fairness issue. What Carroll County has told us is this solution, because we do have EMTs on our Fire Force, they're all volunteer, they cannot pick this up. So what Carroll County is asking us to do is not realistic, and it, it will break the fire department if, if they continue to say that is the only solution. And that's why, when Laurel Fork Rescue sadly is now going under, there is the possibility that in the interim, this could be tried, if there truly are $240,000, to just try this experiment. Laurel Fork Fire is all set up, and, and we have offered to, all we'd need is beds, a couple beds, and we've offered to do that. So it is an experiment that could be very viable and quickly viable, and I hope you will entertain it. Thank you.
Thank you much. Dr. Patterson.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm getting old.
Well, sometimes I say things maybe I didn't say.
I tried my best tonight, and I apologize to everybody, to get you email copies. I'm trying to be 21st century, okay? And help me, somebody, to get their emails straight, because I, it, I got an error message, and it said, "Contact Systems Administrator," so I contacted you. Get my sleeves ready here. Thank you very much for having, letting me speak here tonight, I really appreciate it. I don't like my rear intern to the audience, but just, you know, bear with me. On December 14th, I'll be sitting down with Mr. Dalton and just kind of coming up with some ideas that I see, based on my years of experience with stuff like this, and I really appreciate you taking the time to see, talk to a dumb blonde, okay? Really appreciate the time. When I was going through the agenda, can everybody, am I loud enough? Okay, first, I'm going to talk gross, so I'm sorry if I offend anybody, but there's some things in life that just don't bother me, because I was raised on a farm. And we've got something in the county, though, that's really, really sad, and it's when a family member doesn't claim a body of a loved one. And to me, that is so sad, and it just hurts me in places you don't want to know that it hurts, but it does. So my remains, and this has already been discussed with my family, everybody knows it, it's almost public knowledge, will go to a place called the Body Farm in, at University of Tennessee. And what they do is, it's forensic studies that will go on for approximately two years, and of course, the funeral home will take my body there. And then after two-year study period, then my, what's left of my remains will be cleaned, and they'll be, it'll be boxed for additional studies in terms of bone growth and how my body was, grew and developed, being from southwest Virginia. And so I see it as a way that it helps people learn about how the bodies that we find that are unclaimed, and I see it as a very important piece of information, that they glean from it. The body that we, we haven't, that we've got stored, I say "we," the county's gotten stored over at the funeral home, why couldn't we do the same thing? Dr. Donnie Stedman does, takes the bodies in, and at no charge, it's just, the only cost is to get the bodies there, and by the way, body bags do leak, so that would be, to me, a much more honorable way of dealing with an individual whose family apparently is not interested in him anymore, and this way, he could help the future, it would help other families find their missing ones, or patterns, or the FBI know what to look for and what not to look for. So that's just an idea. I've got her number here, and I'll be glad to share it with you. And the only expense to it would be is just taking the remains to University of Tennessee Body Farm. Moving along now, I was planning to have you all a little, oh, what is it doing? One of the things that has really got me bothered is, and I'll just very quickly get my three minutes' worth in two seconds. I was sitting out at Food Line, and we always go to Food Line and then get a salad, and we eat it in the parking lot, okay? And so, there was one of the county cars in the parking lot, and a gentleman got out of the car, and I have the numbers and all the data that you need, and he came back, and he had a box of beer, and he got back in the car and proceeded wherever he was going. This was at 6:00 in the evening. So, that, to me, somebody needs to clean up somebody's act. And I was very concerned over that, because that's not Carroll County. That's called free-ride home, and I don't think any of us have ever got a free-ride home. Now, also, we were involved in the reassessment efforts, and I was ready to kill, and I'm serious, if I had had lethal weapon available, he probably wouldn't be alive today. But thank God, JB, you didn't have to come out and do the lethal weapon thing with me. But, he came up to our house, he had no identification, he had the county car, and he was in his hunting outfit, or hunting jacket, and we thought it was somebody coming from the county to ask to hunt on the land. So, the dogs all get after him, all 10 of them at the time. I'm trying to keep the big dog, the Portuguese water dog that everybody's afraid of, away from him. And in the meantime, my husband is trying his best to say, "This house is not finished. We've got it documented everywhere that it's only 75% to 80% completed." Well, he informed my husband, that was a lie, that trailers are completed at 100% when you pull them in. Well, that got another story going, and it just went from bad to worse. I called Fran, I mean, it just went from bad to worse. So, when you get my email from you, I've discussed a thing called sensitivity training. And I asked Fran, I said, "Do they get sensitivity training?" Because our culture is very different than a lot of places. And she said, "No." "What's that?" And I told her. And this gentleman, by the way, did not get sensitivity training. He still said my husband lied. And here we've got tile thrown around the yard. So, once again, if you want to come and see my uncompleted house, you're welcome to, but just call so I can tile the dogs. You know, we talk about all the costs that we have in the county, and we do. Y'all are doing a great job, and I really appreciate you. But, you know, if we had some sort of a bulk purchase program in place, and the schools usually have that, and that would help so much, and in terms of, you know, here's $50 for this, $100 for that, do you know that we trust people with fuel cards? Now, I know you're going to say, "We should always trust our employees." Well, there's been some stuff going on that, you know, we all know about and don't want to talk about, that cards have not been used the most correct way. But if we had a bulk purchase system where you went to a certain place, and a certain person checked it out, and filled your vehicle with it, we wouldn't have any more problems. Another issue is this thing about the rescue squads. It's ridiculous. I made some phone calls, as usual, nosy phone calls. Do you know they soft bill? They don't hard bill. Now, I may be incorrect in that, and I hope I am, but I know several years ago, my husband was injured, and we rushed him to the hospital using the rescue squad. And all I had to say was, "I can't pay what insurance doesn't pay," and it was let go. I shouldn't have been able to say that. I use the service. And if somebody's that sick and that hurt, then what's $800? And I'm not saying I'm wealthy, I'm not, don't say that, but if somebody really needed the service, that is nothing compared to saving their lives. And it also would help us. It's something other places use. Do you know that I had to pay $800, and I'm serious about this?
I think you're used about six minutes already.
Got one more thing. I've used $800 for nothing.
Quick one.
So...
Quick one.
I'm sorry, but, in summary, if everybody would just sit down and go through the budget and see what you're paying. Do you know that there was a game in the last budget y'all paid for? And I've got it right here. I'll talk later with Mr. Dalton over it. And there's some things in there that it's like, "What? What's this?" But there was a game, and I can show it to you. So, thank you again. Thank you for your patience with me. I appreciate it, and y'all are doing a great job. Just keep it up. Thanks.
Thank you. I don't think my butt... The worms like my butt. But I'm well aware of that place out there.
Oh, great.
In Tennessee. Jennifer Marshall.
Hi. How are you all? Well, I certainly can't go ahead and do a better job than what Maureen had done a little while ago. But anyways, I am here to represent a group of concerned citizens out there in my Duxford community, of course, regarding the EMS situation. There have been several questions and concerns surrounding the recent EMS situation. So, number one, we ask that you will not go ahead and cut, obviously, EMS from the budgets, as you all know and have heard. It's important for our community, and for the safety of the community. That's number one. Number two, private coverage is not in the best interest, especially in our area. The area is so vast, from 1.8 to going to the opposite end. Y'all know how long it takes to get from the Duxford-Floyd County line to the other end, and even having private coverage is just going to take too long. Having more EMS coverage is just going to be beneficial. We also are hoping that, when you all go ahead and hire the three, I know right now the advertisement's out there, that's not necessarily in there that three are going to be hired. We hope that the three do get hired, that it was talked about, but that you hire adequate people, and that are qualified, highly qualified candidates, to cover those positions. And so, and again, I certainly can't go ahead and talk as good as Maureen did. I mean, she covered it all, and, you know, kudos to her. And so, just wanted to go ahead and put in my two cents and let y'all know how important it is. I know one big thing that y'all talked about was the volunteers out there in our neck of the woods, and a question was, "Why isn't there more volunteers out there?" Well, Duxford's an old community, and so if any of y'all have been out there, you'd know that, you know, it's an aging community. And they came out, Everett came out, and he talked about having more volunteers, and you're looking at the one in there, right here, one, in Duxford. So, if you have any questions about why, then I'd be more than happy to go ahead and sit down and talk with you, talk with any of you about why there is only one person in Duxford. You have one that's out there in Laurel Fork, and then you have me. You know, I'm car six, when you hear it come over the scanner. Why there's only the one? Now, I have family, and Anthony's on shift, and he's on call, there's just me to cover my kids. So, there's a local call, now I've got to shoe them and kick them out to the mother-in-law in order to get out there to a call. So, I wish there was more that was right there, but unfortunately, there's just me in that aging community. But, so, kudos to her, and I wish we did have more volunteers in the area, but they certainly couldn't do the job that our EMTs do. And I'll be quite honest with you, I can't do the job that our EMTs do. As a volunteer, what my job is, is I go out there, and I help them fill out the call sheets, and that helps them when they come out there. I help get that medication, what they're on, fill out those call sheets, and get all that pertinent information. But I can't do what they're highly qualified and trained to do. I can't transport. You don't have... I don't have that. I don't have an AED. I wish I had an AED in my vehicle. Don't even have that. So, that's something that's even as that one person in Duxford, I should have, and I don't even have that as a volunteer. So, anyhow, I hope that y'all hire three more people beyond free EMS. Please don't cut EMS. We need that, and thank you all very much.
Thank you. All right. That concludes Citizen Time. Do I have a motion to approve the payment and invoices?
Mr. Chairman, I move we pay the invoices, sir.
I have a motion to pay the invoices.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Start with you, Phillip.
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Littler?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
I say yes. Do I have a motion on approval of the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the previous ones.
Second. A motion is second. Any discussion? Start with you, Bob.
Yes.
Dr. Littler?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
Phillip?
Yes.
I say yes. All right. Do I have a motion to accept a consent calendar?
I make a motion to accept a consent calendar as presented.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Motion is a second. Any discussion? Start with you, Bob.
Yes.
Dr. Littler?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
Phillip?
Yes.
I say yes. All right. Do I have a motion to accept a consent calendar?
I make a motion to accept a consent calendar as presented.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Motion is a second. Any discussion? Start with you, Bob.
Yes.
Dr. Littler?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
Phillip?
Yes.
I say yes. Now, this comes down to a resolution that we have.
You won't do that. You go right ahead. You're doing a fine job.
I don't know who to start with. Mr. Sheriff, would you come forward, please?
Get out here where you won't hit me too hard.
This is a resolution of appreciation for Sheriff John Gardner, and it says, "Whereas Sheriff John Gardner was employed continuously by Carroll County from March 1985 through December 31, 2019. And whereas Sheriff Gardner began working as a drug deputy before becoming a general investigator and undercover drug investigator. And whereas Sheriff Gardner also served as a school resource officer from 1997 until he was elected Sheriff of Carroll County. Whereas Sheriff Gardner has received many awards for his outstanding contribution in the detection and the battling of illegal drugs. And whereas Sheriff Gardner has completed numerous specialized schools during his career. And whereas Sheriff Gardner has taught classes, educated teachers on the protection of illegal narcotics. And whereas Sheriff Gardner has faithfully served the citizens of Carroll County. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Carroll County Board of Supervisors hereby recognizes that Sheriff John B. Gardner was an asset to all citizens of Carroll County, and expresses gratitude and sincere appreciation for his years of service adopted this night, the ninth of December, 2019."
Rick.
Then we can talk. Let me see. Make sure you got your...
You did.
Talk about the big boss, because I'm running behind the big boss. Mr. Bourne, would you step forward, please? Now, we're going to hire this man as our computer expert here, so...
Sure.
Understand he's acceptable in our county computer. At least that's what I've been told. Is it true to be... Resolution of appreciation, whereas Gary Bourne was employed continuously by Carroll County from June 1985 to December 31, 2019. And whereas Gary Bourne began working as a patrol deputy, following in the footsteps of his father. And whereas Gary Bourne worked his way through the ranks of the sheriff's office, serving as sergeant over patrol. And whereas Gary Bourne was appointed as chief deputy in 2012. And whereas Gary Bourne has faithfully served the citizens of Carroll County, and now, therefore, be it resolved that the Carroll County Board of Supervisors hereby recognizes that the service of Gary Bourne was an asset to all citizens of Carroll County, and expresses gratitude and sincere appreciation for his years of service, adopted this ninth day of December, 2019."
Thank you, Rick.
I don't know what we can do without these guys. They've been great to work with. Anything we need, they've worked on, and just support the county. Ms. Teresa Lester?
I think she's here. Been here the last...
Let's dispense with this one. Bob Martin, would you step forward, please?
He's that unclaimed body over here.
Not yet. Not yet.
Bob, where's your body bag?
It's laying up here. See, I hate to lie, but I'm getting ready to. All right, this is a resolution of appreciation. Whereas Ralph J. Bob Martin, who has used Rex Heel's name on occasions...
I used to be a heel, you know.
H-E-E-L.
He has served as a Pirate Creek Supervisor for Carroll County for five terms. And whereas Bob Martin has served the citizens of Pirate Creek District to the best of his ability for 20 years. And whereas, by serving the citizens of Carroll County, Mr. Martin has worked diligently to improve Carroll County Public Schools. And whereas, Mr. Martin has served on the Public Service Authority, representing Pirate Creek District. And whereas, Mr. Martin has also served on numerous committees, including Mount Rogers Planning District Commission, Recreation Commission, Southwest Virginia Farmers' Market, Twin County 911, Solid Waste Authority, Carroll County Historical Commission, District Three, New River Valley Regional Jail, and New River Highlands R.C.M.D. And whereas, Mr. Martin has maintained a positive relationship with students, parents, and teachers within the Carroll County School System. And whereas, Bob Martin has worked tirelessly to improve Carroll County during his tenure. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Carroll County Board of Supervisors hereby recognizes the services of Ralph J. Bob Martin to the citizens of Carroll County, and expresses gratitude and sincere appreciation for his dedication, adopted this ninth day of December, 2019. But Bob, where did you find all that stuff?
Sheriff Gardner was one of my old students, back about 1800 or so. Now, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. Appreciate it.
I asked my wife Margaret, I said, "Where in the heck did all these years go?" I never thought I'd be 70 years old, let alone be on the board this long. I'd be lying if I told you I just loved every minute of the whole thing. But I'd also be lying if I didn't say how much that I appreciated the opportunity to try to make better my home county, and I'll be the next unclaimed body. I know my wife won't approve that, you know, so thank you so very much.
Thank you, Bob. Speaking of unclaimed bodies...
Before you get there, I guess we can make it official and actually officially adopt those resolutions.
Oh, thank you. Do I have a motion adopting these resolutions?
I move we adopt the resolutions for Sheriff Gardner, and Gary Bourne, and Teresa Lester, and Bob Martin.
A motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is a second. Any discussion? Start with you, Phillip?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Littler?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
I say yes. Now, we can talk about the unclaimed body. Has everybody read that? We have to... We are approving payment of covering...
The expenses.
Expenses related to this individual.
Are there any other choices?
I don't think so.
I can address it.
Yes, go ahead. It's kind of unusual. We don't normally have something like this.
Gentlemen, in simplest terms, when there's an unclaimed body of a...
In, gentlemen, in simplest terms, when there's an unclaimed body of a, of a resident of Carroll County, Carroll County, a chief law enforcement officer of Carroll County is notified by the person having the initial custody or possession of the unclaimed remains. Once the chief law enforcement officer is notified of that and determines that the person did in fact reside in Carroll County at the time of death, then he's to notify the county attorney, who is to forthwith petition the court for an order of disposition. And these are all shalls, there's, there's no discretion there. The code does provide that the locality shall pay the reasonable cost of disposition of the body. But it also does provide that in cases in which a decedent whose remains are disposed of in accordance with this section, has an estate out of which disposition expenses may be paid in whole or in part, such assets shall be seized for such purpose. So again, there's no discretion. The county is required to seize those assets from the estate of the decedent to repay the public for its expenses. The court order entered by circuit court judge does provide for that. And it's my understanding that the sheriff's office is executing or in the process of executing that seizure. Yeah, so these are all shalls, there's not really much discretion there. This is an issue that I think comes up about every two years or so. It's, it's not a common occurrence, but, but it does happen from time to time.
Thank you. Alright, do I have a motion to approve? Approve that payment? So in the process, the whole, the whole thing?
Since we have no other choice, I'll move.
That's right. Alright, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Start with you Bob.
Yes.
Dr. Littler?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
Yes.
I say yes.
I have a question. When will these cremains be placed?
I don't know.
You have an answer?
Yes. Gentlemen, we're screaming it. And we are negotiating some of the family now who are also are willing to reimburse the fact that this at some point may will take position.
Alright, let's move on to the sheriff's department vehicle request. Is everybody familiar with that? There's another question.
Information, yeah.
Go ahead.
Boy, you're good now.
It didn't mention where the funds were going to come from. I thought at one point these were bought from the highway safety funds.
Take me a second here.
These vehicles will be purchased from the monies that they're currently building up in the highway safety fund. What the sheriff, and the acting sheriff, we all met up in the county administrator's room and talked about it. It will take, even ordering them now, there's a lit, a long backlog to order these vehicles and get them in. So when the, what we all agreed upon is go ahead and order them and pay them out of next year's budget, and it will be paid out of the highway safety funds that they accumulate between now and then.
That's the only part I didn't have, I had a question, but it wasn't clear that I.
And it takes six months to get them. Give them three to four months down the road before you get them quit. So we're talking about almost interest.
Alright. Do I have a motion to approve that request?
I make a motion we approve the vehicle request by the sheriff's office.
Second.
Motion is second. Start with you Bob.
Yes.
Dr. Littler?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
Yes.
I say yes. Alright, the next one's a sheriff's office position request. This is for their administrative person that will be leaving in January. And they, because of, there's so much detail with highway safety funds and some of the other stuff, that they want to bring someone on to train that person between now and January, and a little bit later, I think to March, I think is what it is. So do I have a motion approving that request?
Make a motion to approve that request.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Start with you Phillip.
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Littler?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
Alright, motion carries. Old business, committee appointments.
Unless somebody else wants it, I don't mind continuing on District Three.
Alright. I don't mind staying with the planning commission. Cleo, I may want to try to get somebody involved, maybe some, a new appointee, I mean, a new person coming on the board shortly. So let's push that one off, that doesn't expire until January.
I'm on the solid waste and I don't mind serving, but.
I think it has to be, not a board supervisor position, the other one is. I don't know.
Well, Sam Dixon was put on there.
Yeah, that was, that was the one, it's not, not a board member.
I'd just soon come off, I mean, I don't want to cause any dissension.
Let's, let's.
Pays zero and.
Yep, that's right.
So I don't think to get rich out of it, so.
These that have requested to stay, do we need to make motions for each of those?
Those applications, but those are individual.
Because I would, I would like to stay on the social services board also.
Yeah, I see now.
Frankly, it'd be easier if I came off.
Well, I'll make a motion for all the ones on the planning commission, Margaret Leggett, Greg Hawkes, and Robert Beasley. I'll make that motion for those three. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Start with you Phillip.
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Littler?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
And I say yes. So it takes care of three of them. And we, I think, it seems like, it looks like Gerald wants to stay on with the.
Mount Rogers.
Mount Rogers Community Service Board, and Margaret Leggett wants to stay on the Mount Rogers Public Planning Commission.
I'll make a motion that we maintain Gerald Goad on the Mount Rogers Community Service Board.
Alright, a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Motion is second, start with you Bob.
Yes.
Dr. Littler?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
I say yes.
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 And I'll also make a motion that we maintain Margaret Leggett on the Mount Rogers Planning District.
I'll second that. Any discussion? I'll start with you Phillip.
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Littler?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
I say yes. It takes care of everybody, but. Did we get you Tom? I make a motion, we.
Do we need to do applications for those? Okay, okay.
Make a motion we approve Tom Littler for District Three.
I'll second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Start with you Phillip.
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Littler?
I'm saying.
Robbie?
Yes.
I say yes. Alright.
I'll make a motion, maintain Rex Hill on the planning commission.
Alright, there's a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Motion is second. Start with you Bob.
Yes.
Dr. Littler?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
Phillip?
Yes.
I abstain.
I'm not sure we've ever appointed an alternate to District Three that I remember, but we might have, and I just don't know.
I'll have to look it up. We had one sometime, but I don't know that that's, we'll just have to look it up.
The one that was on, on their list, we put on the draw, not Phillip with Phillip.
Phillip, that's alright.
So I'm not sure, and even, according to their records, there isn't one.
We need to look at that, see what we can figure out on it. I make a, make a motion for Robbie for social services board. Do I have a second?
A second.
Motion is second, in discussion. Start with you Phillip.
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Littler?
Yes.
Robbie?
I abstain.
I vote yes. That covers, covers everybody? Except Recreation Commission, what, uh, we have no one that's filled out an application for those. I guess we can just move them forward and look at it next month. That's, those should be alternating, shouldn't they? But I guess it didn't get, get that way.
Yeah, we got Bob on the New River RCD?
Alright, you want to stay on that?
Yeah, it pays zero, and that's what I've earned, all these trips over there for years, so.
Alright, do I have a, have a motion to approve Bob for the, now, Mount, I mean, the New River.
RCD.
RCD.
Some of them.
Do I have a second? I'll second. Start with you Bob.
I'll vote yes for myself. I'm not bashful.
Alright, Dr. Littler?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
Phillip?
Yes.
I say yes.
I never have turned in for gas or anything else, so.
Well, that's a, that's a, you're bailiwick anyway. Alright, I guess that covers that part of it. Now, let's go to the.
In, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, in hindsight, it'd probably be good if I came off of the landfill.
Solid Waste.
Solid Waste.
Yeah, Solid Waste Authority at, um.
We've got a new member coming on board, so we'll give him a copy of these, so he can look at some of those areas that we would, we would have appointees. Alright, we're down to VDOT Smart Skill Projects. Do we need anything to discuss that?
If God will have any suggestions, I, we're going to move forward with some projects on Route Fifty-two and access to the high school.
If I can get a day, I was going to go out and take some pictures, and I have some definite thoughts on concerning Route Fifty-two and.
Twenty-two days.
You'll have it this week if it doesn't rain that day or something like that.
Alright, we're down to board member comments. Start with you Phillip.
Well, I don't have anything other than I wish everybody a Merry Christmas. And glad to see everybody out tonight. That's it.
I'm having to bite my tongue on some stuff, but I do not think it's right for an individual to run for Board of Supervisors and never bother to call anyone on the board and say, I can't make it, or I'll be late. And I don't think it's right if a member on the Board of Supervisors misses call meetings and work, and work sessions on various things that come up. It's, everything we do is very important. Executive session tonight, I've been on the board twenty-two years, and I'll, I'll say that the executive board discussion that we had tonight is the most critical, important thing that, that I've been privy to and discussed in all my years of being on the board. And again, why run for an office if you're not going to attend and you're not going to serve? Of course, there's nobody that I can mention that would certainly stoop to those kinds of things. But if it ever comes up, it's not right. We have a six-member board, and every person counts. And when a supervisor continuously misses and doesn't have the courage or legitimate reason to call and say, I can't make it, Mr. Chairman, I think it's wrong. And that's, that's all I'm going to say.
Dr. Littler?
Couple things, I'd certainly like to send my congratulations to sheriff and chief deputy sheriff. And I'm really sorry I couldn't make your retirement party last Friday, but I had other fish to fry, and I just couldn't make it. But I wish both of you happy retirement, and I'm not sure what JB's going to do, but Gary probably working on some old cars or something. But anyway, thanks for all you've done for the county over the years. And I'd like to congratulate Bob, he's not leaving the building, he's going to the penthouse, because he's moving one floor up to the school board office. I know you're going to the school suite, being up there because of your passion.
It has been, thank you.
I was doing a little calculating, I may put a damper on the fire here just a little bit, but in round numbers, we have about five million dollars that are uncollected past due taxes. And the longer that they go, the harder they are to collect. In my business, a thirty-day outstanding bill is fairly easy to collect, a hundred-and-twenty day bill, you may as well forget about half of them. And that's the way this county is, I think, we've got some that we'll never collect. But nonetheless, working on that number of five million dollars of uncollected past due taxes, if we were to get that money back by what, raising the tax rate, we would have to raise it twenty-five cents to ninety-four and a half cents, tax rate versus the sixty-nine point five, which it is today. And so, everybody knows the county is in not very good financial shape, but to me, that's something we should really be shining a light on and trying to collect those uncollected past due taxes. I mean, that is money sitting there that we could certainly use to good advantage. And with that download, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and see you next year.
Robbie?
I want to personally thank JB and Gary for their many years of service to this county. You have a thank, a thankless job, and you have served us well. You have served the people of this county very well. I wish you both the best of luck in your future endeavors, whichever it may be. Maybe you'll spend some time fishing, or working on cars, or whatever it might be. I do thank everyone for being here tonight, and we are in financial struggle. And so many people get upset when we talk about public service and public safety, and we're not wanting to hinder the public safety of the people of this county at all. We have advertised for positions, and it being a government entity, it's not as easy to fill a position as it is as being something out in the private sector. And certain things that they have to go through to, to get an application through. And EMS is very important to everybody in this county, and I think we're striving to make that a, a priority with what we have. The lady that presented, Ms. Mills that presented the information about Laurel Fork, it's something I've never heard before, and I don't think anybody else on the board's heard it either. And it's something that we need to look into, about them having that, those funds there. And if they're there, we need to, we need to see if we can't utilize them to, to serve that area. We are working hard to, to improve the financial standings of this county, and hopefully, it's on the upswing, it really is. It may take some time. It's not something we can turn around in six months, it's not something we can turn around in a year. I don't even know if we can turn it in two years, according to Mr. Dalton. But we are trying. And lastly, I want to thank Bob for his dedication and service to the people of this county. He, he has a true heart for the people of Carroll County. He, he has a true heart for the people of Carroll County, he really and truly does. There's not, I'm not, I don't know of many other people that has that heart like he does. He reaches out, he, he cares about the kids, he cares about what's going on with the kids in this county, and, and he wants to make sure that they're all treated fairly and treated equally, and I think he'll do a great job serving on, on the school board. Once again, Merry Christmas to everyone, and thank y'all for being here tonight.
Well, EMS is very important, and everybody brings that to our attention, but we're working on it. Got a man here in the back, has been, I don't know how many days, he's probably been trying to go through these things, look at applications, look at, work with our personnel officer to get all that stuff together to work so we can move forward with, with, with some of those issues. And to go back and, and, we leave an open-ended date, we, government typically do, does that when they anticipate numerous positions down the road. You know, we had the, the county administrator, when, when we were advertising for it, we had open date for a period of time, and then we set a closing date on it. If you got an open date, if you don't have, if you have a closing date, you usually have a hundred and twenty days that you can continue past that amount. So that's, you know, that's, that's just another issue, but our hearts is with EMS and, and fire departments as well. I know a lot of the people that were served in Dougspur Fire and Rescue, they just, they got too old to be able to do those things, or the volunteer service. Roger Root back there is another that worked on it as well, so, you know, we're cognizant of these, these issues, and, and we're working on them. And I would do like to say thanks to JB and Gary. Gary, when I need my computer fixed, I'm coming to see you, okay?
I'm carrying a list of things over here.
But we really appreciate that. That's gonna be tough, not getting up every morning and riding over to the sheriff's office or checking on the guys or seeing what's going on, it's just, that's just a long thing. And the other thing, I'm gonna thank Bob, like you said, Bob's heart is always in the right place, but I'm not sure where his foot is. He gets, he seems to have a problem with that tractor and other equipment, but we really appreciate Bob. And I want, I wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Dalton.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I make a statement?
Yes.
I knew it from here, there, either one. I wanna thank Mr. Martin for his service, I'm the bad guy, I guess, a lot.
No, no, no.
But, you know, I hope I can do half the job you done and make you proud as a former student of yours.
I already am proud.
But, one of the, one of the things I do wanna make it, you know, noted to the public and the citizens that voted me in as supervisor. Back in June, I had a commitment that my family, thirteen of us are gonna be on a cruise January sixth through the eleventh. We worked months to pick that date, and then two, two months ago, the board changed the normal meeting, meeting night from the thirteenth to the sixth, so I will miss the first official meeting, January sixth, I will be gone, but, you know, with that said, I hope the next forty-seven I can be here, and, you know, thank y'all for the opportunity for the last couple of months to work with y'all and getting a lot of insight on things, and with that said, thank you again, Mr. Martin, for everything, and...
Good morning, well.
Hopefully the phone still, you'll answer.
You'll do an excellent job.
Thank you. They do know all know, and I am a proud father of now a Secret Service agent effective January sixth, so...
That's what you're trying to say, just for your fair.
Well, yeah.
All right, Mr. Dalton?
Members of board, your franchise agreement for trash collection expires in February twenty-twenty, the actual date is the eighth, I believe. We need some direction whether to try to negotiate an extension of this, which is allowed, it was originally bid and awarded on May the sixth of two thousand and four. So, a request and direction from you guys, whether you wanna start renegotiating, advertise to a public hearing. What is your pleasure, y'all?
That, that is a non-exclusive contract, is it not?
It is.
We sometimes have them come and talk to us and talk about rates and what's gonna come up, I don't know, we'll do it this time.
Last agreement, when it was extended two years ago, allowed them to increase rates to two-point-three-one percent.
Do we know if they're asking for anything this time?
We do not. I have a meeting scheduled with Mr. Martin here later this month, but we'll talk about that very soon, so...
Do we have to have a public hearing before we do anything on it?
Is that the last time I think you're gonna extend it? It is.
Does it provide for additional compensation or is it a renegotiation?
I think it's a renegotiation. The original one, this guy, is being two-year term, so...
Gentlemen, usually by the time you're fifteen years into a process, it's a good idea to...
Negotiate.
Hold the public hearing for a new franchise, I think fifteen years is for a franchise of one.
I think whoever, if we get, if we do this, we should also work with them, see if they can do our collection down at below the mountain, to at least transport what we collect down our force as part of this agreement.
I think you should, I guess.
So, give us some, some cost savings there, so we, so what's y'all's pleasure? You wanna make, do a public hearing and...
I think that's a proper thing to do.
That's something that would be a good idea.
All right, do I have a motion?
I have a motion, we conduct the public hearing on the franchise agreement for waste pickup.
Second. All right, motion and second, does that mean, does that end in January?
January sixth.
January sixth, all right. All right, any discussion? Start with you, Philip?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
I say yes. All right. Missing anything, is that everything?
No, that's not everything, but another item is that we would like to request permission in board action, allow us to proceed with the issue of purchase orders for the two fire trucks continuing on.
That's right.
Can the attorney review of the proposals?
All right, so we, we need a motion to proceed with that. Do I have a motion?
Start with you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Start with you, Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
Philip?
Yes.
I say yes. Anything else?
I would just like to thank JB, for the short time I've been here, he's treated me like the three-headed stepchild that I am, but they've been great, him and Chief Deputy Moore have been great to work with, and they try to keep giving me the combination, and I say I don't need in that jail cell that they've got, but they've done a great job. And I appreciate Bob Martin, I've known him most of my life, from Hillsville High School days, the senior classman there for eighth graders and stuff. It's been my pleasure to work with you, Bob, and thank you for what you do.
I remember you, you've been the best, you've been the best county administrator I've ever been associated with, and that covers all of them except one.
Well, thank you for your service, and I appreciate everything you've done for this county, and I look forward to working on the school board budget. Merry Christmas to everybody.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All favors say aye.